If there is anybody out watching in the public, we hope you're all staying well and keeping healthy. And through these times, we have one item basically on our agenda, and that's to review the proposed school committee budget, superintendent and school committee budget. And after the review, a motion would be in order to recommend to the full committee. So I will turn it over to the superintendent, who I believe will then turn it over to Mr. Roach.
Yeah, I'll just start off by framing it. We put together a $479 million balance budget, up 5.9% from last year. For our discussions, we thought we were going to get more Student Opportunity Act money than we ended out getting tentatively. What we've done with the extra Student Opportunity Act money, the 3.5 million, is we balanced the budget by sending that out all to the schools. So each school got their proportionate share of the Student Opportunity Act and built it into their spending plan in the nine state categories that were approved. So that 3.5 million surplus in our original budget, that's how we spent it. And that's where we spent 100% of the Opportunity Act money. Mostly the other budget is really very similar to last year's budget. And again, it's balanced after several meetings. We gave the schools, in essence, what we did last year. And Central Office, we began with a proposal of 3% cuts and took a look at tightening up there. But I'll turn it over to Pat to roll through the budget. But again, a lot of work done by all the teams at Central Office and all the department heads to balance and put a strong budget together.
Just before you start, Pat, I'm sure you're warning the schools not to spend any of that opportunity money until we actually know that it's coming.
Well, the schools are well aware. We built it in separately into the Opportunity Act. We built into their overall spending plan. But they know exactly it was for something extra that they wanted to do as a school, knowing that that funding could have gone up or down from the beginning. And we've warned them that certainly at this juncture with all that's going on, that's tentative. But we also have built in other contingencies based on the state budget and the fluctuation that's going right now at the state level with the revenues. So we have contingencies to balance with that. We're proposing based on the governor's budget and what we knew what the governor put out. And then we have contingencies built to balance it up or down if things change. And that could happen as late as July, August, whenever it happens. But it's the best information we have at this juncture. So let Pat roll with it.
All right, so can everybody see the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Awesome. All right, so we have the superintendent's recommended budget for you all. So strategy and approach, this year we started off with a surplus of 3.5 million. Normally, we're starting off in a deficit and, you know, $5 million, $10 million. And it's starting off with what are we going to cut and how are we going to get to balanced? Where this year was pretty exciting, we started off with an extra $3.5 million. So what did we do? We started off, we used the governor's budget numbers, which included the additional funds for the Student Opportunity Act. And that came through as extra Chapter 70 money. Unfortunately, while that 3.5 million seems great and it's much better than prior years, we were really expecting a lot more than that. The Student Opportunity Act formula was, the way it should have been implemented, is every one of the categories should have been increasing by 14% year over year until you got up to the amounts recommended from the Student Opportunity Act. And that's what we were expecting in the low income category. But in the low income category, they only increased that increment by 4% rather than 14. So in Springfield, we took a hit compared to what we were expecting. And basically, everything we had been hearing from the state was that it would be going up that 14%. So it ended up hurting us by $11 million. We thought we were going to get $11 million more than we actually did. But with that $3.5 million, we took all of it and we pushed it right out to the schools proportionately, like the superintendent was mentioning. And we had each one of the schools develop a plan on how they would spend those funds. And we, you know, the state law has what categories they're allowed to spend it in. And it's all on interventions and different things of direct services. So how did we continue to build the budget? We asked all Central Office departments to submit 3% reductions. It's a practice we do every single year. And even this year, not having to cut, we still thought is a best practice. See if there's any efficiencies we can get out of Central Office budgets. My team of analysts looked through fringe benefits, utilities, out-of-district tuition, a lot of our major cost-driving accounts to see if we could, you know, find any savings there. Like we always do, we look at all funds, grants revolving funds to see if we can realign resources. And then we implemented any cost-saving strategies that we thought. So here is the budget. Actually move this so I can see. So as you can see, Chapter 70, we got an additional $19.6 million, 5.3%. Something I will point out, out of that $19.6 million, you know, a chunk of that goes to the charter schools and a chunk of that goes to the empowerment zone. So out of the Student Opportunity Act funds in that increase, we don't even have control over the whole entire amount of it. But it ended up going down to the total operating revenue was a 5.9% increase. So down on the expense side, we had salaries. Salaries, we're projecting a 9.6% increase, a $9.6 million increase, which is 5% increase. So what makes that up? That's where a lot of the Student Opportunity Act funds, schools use to hire intervention teachers, any sort of like counseling, different things of that nature, stipends to run some teams or tutoring. All of that's in salaries. We also are hiring six new pre-K teachers in Paris. We're converting 300 half-day pre-K seats into full-day pre-K seats. So in order to convert the seats, you actually have to add staff in order to do that. Supplies and service are pretty much level funded. We did push out all the money to the schools, but enrollment's down. So while there are some increases with the decreased enrollment, it kind of stays level funded. Next, we break out the empowerment zone, just so you can see that, they're going up 2.6%. The reason they're not directly tied to the rest of the district, the percentage increase, has to do with the optional, non-optional services. So that can make their percentage go up or down. That's not the actual revenue they're getting. That's just what we're going to budget to them to actually have for money to move around. Health insurance, a 5.4% increase. That's a little higher than the prior couple of years. But we tie out exactly to what the GIC has based on our spending plans for our employees. Retirement, a 10% increase. That's based on the schedule set by the Springfield Retirement Commission and approved by PARAC. So we are handed that number, and we don't really have any flexibility in that. Other benefits is going to be a 4% increase. Utilities, 3.1%, which is actually pretty good considering how utilities have been going up. We've been doing many things to save energy at the end of the day, try to be more efficient. Sped out of district tuition, you see a 38% increase. Really, what's driving that increase is the fact that we don't have as much circuit breaker carryover. We would always offset a piece of that on the circuit breaker carryover, and we're not able to do that this year. The actual overall cost for out-of-district tuition is pretty similar to prior years, but we just can't offset it on some grant funding that we don't have at the moment.
Yeah, we've kept our out-of-district numbers down.
I'm sorry?
We've done a good job of keeping the out-of-district numbers down, so.
Yep. Yeah, and they're pretty stable. So the actual cost of out-of-district tuition is pretty stable. So while it looks like a large increase, it's just a large increase to the general fund, not to out-of-district tuition. And then charter school, school choice is a 7.2% increase.
You can see $70 million.
$70 million. So a lot of money.
And again, up 4.5 million even from last year, so really staggering.
After that, we have the non-net school spending items, which are transportation, adult ed, and non-net school spending leases. And so that category is going up 8%. It is mostly transportation that's driving that line item, and it's mostly the charter schools. When they add grades and when they add schools, it adds to the transportation costs. And it keeps us from having to manage it. Since it's not stable and the charter schools are adding grades every year, that's what drives the amount going up. You're taking kids from neighborhood schools and then you're busing them citywide. So with that, you go down to the yellow line there, total anticipated budget gap, and we have a balanced budget. So this slide shows you kind of by department, what chief, how the increases look and how it looks by department. So the first one's business and finance. You see the change there. A big chunk of that is the transportation and non-net school spending leases that we just saw. And those benefit increases that we went over as well. So now communications, $13,000 increase. Curriculum instruction, an $81,000 increase, a 3% increase. Human resources is going down a little bit, a 0.3% decrease. IT, $327,000 increase. That's mostly due to year four of the leases or the next year on our computer leases. So everybody knows about the one-to-one initiative. That's our one-to-one initiative, the new contracts are up a little bit. Parenting community engagement, which is, shows a 43.2% increase. What that is, is we moved some things from grant funding into the general fund with parenting community engagement. So their budget's not really going up 43.2%, but there were some costs associated with student assignment services that are more appropriate in the general fund than on Title I. And then special education is a 5.9% increase, 22%. That is the out-of-district tuition line item that's mostly driving that cost. And then there are additional staff since last budget as well that were added during the year. Student services, $6,000, 1.6%. School operations, $19.9 million. So you can see out of the change from the budget, we're pushing all that money out to the schools as much as possible. $20 million is going right out to the schools. That's where we all want the money to be spent, and that is where it's being allocated. Superintendent, $20,000 increase, and school committee, $9,000 increase. So I sent out a summary of significant changes that kind of walks through a little more in detail about any additional changes in the departments. And so if anybody has any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And if you have any after the fact, feel free to call me and I'd be happy to go over anything if anybody.
Pat, are you prepared to, do you have the significant changes by department? Prepared to go into slides?
I have the document.
Why don't we go through it? I think it's, since this is going out to the public, I think it's helpful.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of explanation in those documents as to what the changes meant and why they happened.
Sure, so let me, I'll finish going through this PowerPoint and then I can get into that. How does that sound?
Fine.
Okay. So this shows you the changes in FTEs by each department. You can go through, business operations is pretty much the same, communications is the same, curriculum's pretty similar, HR is the same, you know, IT's a fractional FTE. PACE is down one, special education's up quite a few positions, student services is level, school committees level. And then school operations, you can see the significant amount of increase in FTEs in school operations. That's all the additional positions.
Student Opportunity Act money, yeah.
Yep. So you can see it's pretty positive where all the positions are being added and kind of where our money's being invested and what schools are actually doing with that money. So some of the highlights of the budget, the 3.5 million in SOA funds that we're spending on evidence-based programs and the highest need subgroups, converting the 300 pre-K seats from half-day to full-day, expanding City Connect's wraparound services, continued support of the diversity initiatives, continued support of the home visit project, Imagine Learning licenses, I'm sorry?
Can I ask you a question really quickly on the last slide? How many total full-day preschool slots do we now have with the addition of these extra 300?
I can get you an exact answer, but I'm going to tell you, I think it's close to 700.
Okay, and is it true, and I think you told me this already, but I want to make sure I understand correctly, that we've expanded into other elementary schools that did not traditionally have a full day and now they will have full days so that we have more kids having access to those full-day program in their local neighborhoods?
Yes, so we tried to, we have, Brookings is going to have full-day pre-K and they didn't have it before. Dryden is going to have full-day pre-K and they didn't have it before. Warner is going to have full-day pre-K and they didn't have it before. The Walsh is going to have full-day pre-K and they didn't have it before. So I think those are all the new schools that have it. And then we expanded it in other neighborhood schools where we saw the need as the greatest based on, we actually looked neighborhood by neighborhood and tried to mirror the seats as much as possible to the kindergarten cohorts. So we could say, okay, these are neighborhoods that we know are underserved, and this is where we need to open up more seats.
Thank you.
To get the four-year-olds from that neighborhood having access to those programs.
So the Imagine Learning licenses for Level 1 and 2 ELL students, we're funding that. In IT, it's a small dollar amount, but they're going to have some paid internships for SPS graduates to actually grow them into, you know, kind of create a career path for them in the IT department. And then a messaging platform to engage students who are graduating and make sure that there's no summer learning melt between them and going to college. So we thought those were all great initiatives that we were able to fund this year. And with that, any questions on this before I go out into the summary of significant changes?
Pat, just not to interrupt, but I'm on the phone now. I've been on the phone for a couple of minutes, but I was having a little trouble getting in. Just wanted to let you guys know I'm here.
Well, thanks.
How you doing?
I'm good, I'm good, thank you, thank you guys. It's been riveting so far, Pat.
All right.
Oh, it sounds great.
Everybody see the new document?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so summary of significant changes. This is the slide we were just looking at that I walked through. This shows you the total by the district, each department, and then shows you the FTE changes. So I will go to the next slide. Here's business and financial services. So within business and financial services, HR suspense is a holding area for employees when teachers go out on medical leaves or they go out on maternity leaves. And we also, you know, do some processing for other departments there. It's kind of a holding account. Copy operations, we were able to generate some savings there. Facilities, minimal increase. Finance and budget, minimal increase. Lost times, lapped salaries. That's the account we do to project how long positions are going to be vacant for. And when we generate a savings there, it helps us balance the budget. Fringe benefits, you can see that's going up 7.1%. In transportation, 7.9%. So for the business office, that's what totals, that's 6.8% right there. And then for FTEs, there was a point, a 0.4 change. And let's see, so to the next slide. You can see $7,000 telephone repair expenses. We were able to make that cut within the business office because we've gone to VoIP out in the schools. So we're getting rid of most of our analog phones. And so we were able to cut that amount from that line item. Next, we have communications, which pretty much doesn't have any change in it. The receptionist for Central Office had a pay adjustment during the year to correct her salary. And so that's what's kind of driving the 5.9% increase in personnel service changes there. But overall, there's been no real change for communications. So curriculum and instruction, this is the Central Office. Each one of these categories is basically, possibly there's a director in it. And then all the supply money, we push out to the schools. So we try to keep minimal amounts of money in these departments. And it's usually just potentially a salary or some other types of repair items we might have. So if I walk through these, you can see the PD budget's a 1.9% increase. Science, 2.5. Health instructional is 8.1. Art is 2.7. We had those big increases to the art budget last year. So that's, this is just a minimal increase this year. Math, 2.9. Literacy, 2.9. Foreign languages, 2.2. Humanities, 3.5. English language, 2.0. The overall academics office, 2.6. Advanced placement, 1.1. The ELL department's getting a 7% increase. And overall, you can see that totals a 3% increase. So for FTEs, they are down 1.2. I can come down here. So the 1.2 consists of eliminating a vacant language assessor position and a two-pride increase for the PD center security guard. And then we also reallocated 0.4 of an OTPT that was originally in this budget. And now we moved them over to the special education budget. So the language assessor, this was a question Ms. Gresham had earlier, and I actually called her and answered it for her. We added this position two years ago to, you know, specifically to account for the additional assessments. We never used to assess pre-K students. And when we started doing it a couple of years ago, we had to add somebody to kind of build that capacity. And now that we're up and everything's running, the position went vacant and they were able to do all the assessments with the current staff, so they didn't need the backfill of it. You see, existing staff within the department will conduct the assessments. So now we're on the HR budget. they have $10,000 being added for an intern to support the department functions. And $30,000 for safety and security for a new visitor entry system that we had approved for carryover on the prior year. And this is like the ongoing cost that we need to fund it going forward. Overall, there wasn't anything too, too crazy. And the safety and security decrease has to do with the empowerment zone funding a Quebec officer that was funded by the district last year. So it's just not showing up in the safety and security budget because the empowerment is funding. I believe it's Commerce, actually. And they had some minimal reductions to a couple of their accounts. $20,000 arbitrations, $1,500 office supplies, and $300 for copy charges. That I'm told may go up now with the COVID expenses, but shouldn't.
You'd have to do a lot more mailings of information for things we used to hand out, so that may go up slightly.
So as far as IT department, their management line went down 27.5%. Digital learning was flat. Information management is up 0.7, and technical operations, 9.5. And overall, the FTE is up 0.3%. So come down here. So for their new initiatives, they, we added $8,000 so that they could respond to smart board issues. So what used to happen was when a smart board went down, the school would have to call and pay for the diagnostics. And so IT found a better way to do it, which is them paying for the initial service call. And then if the boards are broken, the school can decide if they want to fund the repair or the replacement. But IT's going to take care of those original diagnostic calls. And then they're going to add 420-hour paid internships for the SPS graduates that we had talked about earlier. And then it's hard.
I have a question. So I don't know how to best ask the question, so I'll just throw it out there. I think you read in between the lines and figure out what I mean. So with the costs, I know that we projected already and have been working with students to have the one-on-one access to laptops, right? And so now that a lot of the schools had to expedite their process and actually start sending laptops home now because families needed them, is that cost reflected anywhere in the budget? Or is that something that we had already planned for, so it's kind of absorbed? Where would we see that?
So we had already planned for that. That was built into the one-to-one initiative. And we had enough extra to take care of the K2 in there. So it wouldn't drive the cost unless what happens when now that we distribute more for take-home, we could end up having more loss there. So that could be something that we have to absorb later. But for now, we had enough to do that.
Okay.
So there was no cost driver there.
And just as a brief follow-up, initially, we also had the $20 copay or what have you so that we could cover insurance or something. That obviously is not something that we're looking at now with the COVID crisis. And so are we, is, I know it wasn't, we, I, to be honest, probably was one that was saying I probably didn't need to do it anyways. But where, is that something that we're going to see reflective if folks are losing or are damaging those computers and they need to be replaced?
So what we're going to do is our plan on that would be, we can talk about the insurance later, but we needed to get them out for now, so we're not going to have the insurance. So if someone damages one, we have the ones that have gone offline from the fourth year to the fifth year. So we'll only replace them for use in school with one of the older computers that's still working.
All right, thank you.
The loss is going to be the biggest, you know, thing that we don't have budgeted as far as the computers go. But we think it's going to be much higher than the previous ones. But other than that, we have everything, so we're actually pretty good with that. What reductions were done in the IT budget? We were able to cut 186,000 from the phone line budget, and that's a great, great cut right there. Because now that we're at VoIP and everything's going over the internet, we're going to cut those phone lines and we're not going to have to pay this expense. So on a prior carryover budget, when we funded VoIP, it was a great expense because it's going to save us money every year going forward. $41,000 for ineligible schools as far as E-rate goes. They changed the regulations on E-rate and now pre-K students are allowed to be counted. So we can cut $41,000 from the budget there, you know, without cutting any services. $30,000 for a router at Duggan, the licensing cost. $2,000 for a different license. And $1,000 from technician overtime that we haven't spent in the past few years. Paul felt pretty good about us being able to do that. Next, you have PACE. And so this actually gets to show you how, you see, the chief of PACE is down 45%. PACE operations is down 45%, but student operations is up 403. So overall, you can see, we did a lot of reallocating within the department. And this doesn't show you Title I, but really what we did was we brought expenses from Title I and kind of just realigned them to where they're most appropriate. Student assignment services, that we had some staff on Title I. It's not a great place for them because Title I is supposed to be supplemental and student assignment services are core services. Wanted to get those in the general. You can see over here with the FTEs that that's what, the FTE is going from special revenue to the general fund. And it's a one FTE change. And the one FTE was the senior administrator of student assignment services. That was Lourdes's old position, so when she became the chief of PACE, they did some reorg and we didn't backfill that position. Next, we have special education. And preschool, this is just some central staff. You know, that's a 0.1% change. Psychology, a 2%. Psychology, a two percent change. School health services is a seven point one percent reduction. The special education office is up one point three million, which is almost eighteen percent. Out-of-district tuition is up three point nine million, which is forty-five percent. Related services is up a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, which is nine point two percent. Speech, language, and vision is up five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, which is eleven point four percent. And translation services is down sixty thousand, twelve point seven percent. So overall, that's almost six million dollars and a twenty-two percent increase. And then down here, when you look at FTEs, we added seventeen point seven FTEs to spend. And this kind of sums up. So the, the health services was changing from a pool nurse to a school-based nursing position. We added three ETLs, one autism specialist. We, some one-to-one pairs, and actually eight one-to-one pairs.
Eight one-to-one pairs, yeah.
Yep. And then down in related services, we had the point four OTPT, and that's the one that we saw that corresponding on in academics. So we moved the OTPT from academics because they were supporting pre-K over to here. And then speech, language, and vision is up, and SLP, three SLAs to cover the need. And then the translation.
I wanted you to go, this is why I wanted you to go through the individual ones, Pat, because it tells, when you see a big number like twenty-two percent increase, this tells you why. It's good information.
Yep. And then translation, we eliminated the manager of translation position for FY twenty, and the duties were redistributed. And their only reduction was ten thousand dollars to PD. So then we have student services, which had the six thousand dollar increase, they're one point six percent. No changes to FTEs, and that's just basically annual salary adjustments for staff. So here we have the schools. And the difference between the different levels has to do with where students are and whether they're ELL or special education. So elementary's six point five million, secondaries are getting three point four. Alternatives are up one percent, the empowerment zone's up six percent. Charter and school and school choice is up ten percent. Substitutes and class coverage is pretty close to level, it's point seven. Meal coverage, we, we're not funding in the general fund. We push that money out to the schools and let the schools manage that money. So it's actually up either in elementary, secondary, or alternative. The schools have control of that. We used to pay for it centrally. We don't anymore. The school support office is one point three percent. Adult ed, five point eight, and athletics, eight point three. Overall, that's almost a twenty million dollar increase in just under seven percent. You can see here.
That's where we spent all our extra money, if you look at it.
Yep, seventy-one point two FTE change, so that's where our money's going. And this kind of shows you the three point five for the Student Opportunity Act. That ended up being two hundred dollars per pupil. We, we give the schools the general fund intervention money that we were already doing, which was five hundred dollars per pupil. We give them a supply allocation of a hundred and forty-five dollars per pupil and a textbook allocation of forty dollars per pupil. And then within the academic accounts, there's a whole bunch of other random amounts that they get as well, but these are the most significant ones right there. And you can see here that FTEs, we have forty-five point four. Teachers, pairs, and tutors on SOA funds. Twelve teachers and pairs, it's six teachers, six pairs for the new pre-K classrooms, or they're the, making the half day to full day, the three hundred students swap there. And ten new City Connect coordinators. And superintendent's budget is basically completely level funded, and there were some salary adjustments for the support staff. So five point five percent. And it's the exact same thing for the school committee, everything's level funded, those same salary adjustments. And that's everything. Any additional questions?
Well, this was very helpful. Thank you. I appreciate Vice Chair asking you to go into detail. I looked at it, and I didn't have any major questions, but once we started going through the presentation, then things started popping up. So I appreciate all of the clarity, and so limits my questions at this point.
Absolutely. If you come up with any later, feel free to reach out.
Okay.
Going through that was very, is, I knew would be helpful, not only for us, but for anybody else who might be viewing. With that said, and having gone through it, is there a motion to recommend this budget to the full school committee?
Chris, would you mind if I, could I, I just have one sort of comment and question for Pat?
I want you to do that before we make a motion.
Yeah, well, I just, on the horizon, it just looks to me that there are gonna be a number of budgetary challenges on like every level of government, federal, state, and local. I mean, we're not, you know, everything is getting pushed back. Excise taxes, your, your federal taxes, your state taxes, and that there's gonna be huge budget shortfalls. I mean, in my opinion, coming, you know, in, in, in probably the fall. And I just, I just want to, you know, make sure that we're, that we're prepared or cognizant of that. And I'm, I'm wondering what Pat thinks about that so far as, you know, how we would move forward if we had a real budgetary challenge, which is, you know, potentially likely in, you know, October, November, December, something like that.
So it's a great question. I mean, I think it's something that we've absolutely considered. You know, the, the way we allocated the Student Opportunity Act funds is it was a special line item to schools. You saw it was the two hundred dollars per pupil. So the schools budgeted it that way, and they know that that's what it's for. And, and, you know, if the state chose not to fund Student Opportunity Act funds, that would be, you know, somewhere that we would be, you know, looking at. I think, you know, looking, if this is gonna be a one-time shortfall, could we plug any gaps with one-time funds? It's something that, a tool that we have in the tool belt. And then, you know, all of the chiefs submitted three percent cuts. We didn't take most of those cuts for most departments, you know, because some of them had service reductions. They were, they were related to service reductions. However, we have a list of what would be next in line if we did have to go down that path. You know, with trying to keep the cuts as far away from the classroom as possible.
Look, our operational budget went up twenty million, which is, give or take, seven percent, I think, right? So we're, you know, we're going up, and it, on the horizon, it's potential, that there's a real potential that our revenues will go down. And that's what, you know, kind of scares me. I mean, I, I, you know, the budget, you did a great job on the budget, and I'm voting for it. But I just, I think that we should have, you know, contingency plans, and I hope, I hope that we do. I mean, I know the state has three billion dollars in its rainy day fund, so that, that will certainly likely help, you know, down the road. But I do think we're looking at some cuts. You know, I think the, the city is gonna, there's gonna be reduced revenue there. The state's gonna have reduced revenue. And then the, you know, the federal government ultimately is gonna have less revenue. So it just looks like it's a problem, you know? And I, I just, I just want to bring that up and make sure we're, you know, we're thinking about it and, and planning for that.
Peter, I think that prior to you joining, three and a half million of that increase is the student opportunity money, which we basically are looking, preparing people that you won't have that money to spend if the state does have difficulty, financial difficulties. More than likely, that's where they're gonna cut, is they're not gonna give us the student opportunity money, or they'll move it from a seven-year rollout to an eight-year rollout and push everything out an extra year. So that's, that's already being planned on that you might not have that to spend.
And it's new money, so it's not even a service cut. It's actually just something we won't be able to do.
It was built in as something extra for each school, so it's, and the principals know that that's contingent on that getting funded, and that's if yet structure. So we have, we have contingencies.
No, I, I, I'm just, I just hope we're, and I, and I'm sure you guys are. I mean, I'm, I'm sure we're, we're all looking at, but just to be prepared for, you know, what could be a really difficult financial revenue shortage in the, in the future. I mean, you know, I mean, the way I look at it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we reviewed that because we're all on new technologies, and, and you had a little difficulty getting in it in the beginning, and we had that discussion, and I thought you missed it, so I want to make sure we went back and reviewed that.
Chris, you, you kind of, I didn't hear that. You, you kind of blacked out there.
Well, hopefully I didn't blackout, but no. I said, when you were having some technical difficulty getting in, we had had that discussion, which is why I wanted to go back and review the fact that three and a half of that million of that new increased money, people are already being warned it might not be there for you to spend. So don't make plans where you're, where you've got it spent, and then you gotta roll back.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Thank you. Thanks, Pat.
So is, if there's no other questions, is there a motion to recommend this budget to the full committee?
I'll move.
There's a second.
Second.
Terry, I'm gonna have you call the role, since we're on technology, just make it easier, I think.
Chris Collins?
Yes.
Peter Murphy?
Yeah.
Letalina Naylor?
Yes.
Or the significant number this item passes. With nothing else on our agenda, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, aye? Thank you, everybody, for, for logging in and for, we're getting a little better with this technology, and hope we'll have it down even better as we go to our next actual full school committee meeting. Have a good day, everybody.
You too.